The green.
The green.
Definitely. Alright, you should be good to go.
None of hasn't started yet.
Hasn't started yet? Is that better?
Alright, call the meetings in order.
You know, six oh three P M.
What's that, what's the allegiance please?
The United States of America into the Republic of Washington, one nation, ungod, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attendants, we give the attendants.
Uh, Diane online?
I did not see Diane online.
Okay, everybody's present but Diane.
Alright. Alright, we'll move on to uh public participation, if anybody's in the public to speak.
It looks like the only person online is I T that's monitoring as a backup, so I don't think you got anybody online.
Alright, nobody here, we'll move on. Alright, next item is the A M R contracts.
I didn't know if there was some.
Um, I have, I was hoping, I realized he wasn't gonna be here tonight, I was hoping James is gonna be here to give us some update. Um, maybe even like I said, is there any any verbiage on the uh kinda end piece of it?
Yeah, so um we did reach out to the town attorney uh this week, cause we we haven't heard any update from after our discussion at this meeting. Um, and I have not received an update, so I would think that we probably would have um something uh before the next meeting. Um, the town attorney said he was waiting for the E M S committee to meet, um so we did, we did tell him that uh we uh we met uh last week or last month in the discussions and board with that um and uh contract change, um he was gonna get back to us, so that's just what we're waiting on.
I'll follow up with the town manager tomorrow too as well, see where he's at with it, see if we can schedule something and get something moving.
Okay, yeah.
Moving on, alright, key point for tonight is the uh town twenty twenty three E M S plan. Um, which uh uh we said last month that we were gonna go through, start making updates and start going through the document. Uh, if anybody has any objections, uh we'll start on page one, start going through the document and see how far we get tonight. Um, Diane is going to uh obviously take notes, um she's gonna have the word format uh so she can go in and do it online. Does anybody have their doctor?
I do not, it's alright.
Um, you good, you have your document?
Oh yeah.
Alright, so uh we can start.
Multiple name changes for the uh.
Yeah, I'm just gonna go through, we'll go through page by page real quick, and then if anybody has anything, we can uh obviously do that and Diane can write down. Um, page one, or I'm sorry, page two. Uh, I see anything that needs to be changed, any comments or concerns? Our attorney still.
She's still listed as assistant county attorney, or how are we?
County still listed as assistant county attorney.
That's how it should be listed.
Alright. Uh, page three. Um, I see anything that needed to get changed, cause we, right now evidence is kinda staying.
After we, after we update pages, we'll probably have to just confirm page numbers and whatnot.
Yep. Uh, any issues with page three? Alright. Uh, page four. Um, again, same thing as page three, I think uh uh the only change would be the attachment. Would be the two thousand two E M S plan, or twenty, yeah, two uh two thousand and two. Uh, we should, I think we should change that to two thousand and eighteen.
Correct.
Anybody else, any input on page four? Alright, page five. Uh, to me, I believe it uh still the same, so unless anybody has any concerns, we can move on. Uh, page seven.
Diane was already working on updating all the names, um so that's something we can move forward with, uh she's updating all the town councilor names. Mayor name, et cetera.
And then uh due to the E M S. Wait, oh, that's changed too, correct?
Yep.
Anything else for page seven? Uh, page eight. Obviously, again, we still need some name changes. Um, and then you're gonna provide us the A M R changes, correct?
Yes.
Alright. Uh, and then obviously, yeah, the other thing I see is name changes.
And the address for the town hall.
Oh, that's right, look, the the full document, that town hall address has to change, including the main cover. Uh, page nine. Um.
Are the A M R, is the A M R people that the same?
No, he's going to um.
Give us the update.
Yeah, he's gonna send an email um with the updates and I can forward it to you. Um, yeah, for anything that A M R needs to change, help, if putting that to us and we'll just go through. Um, page nine. Uh, obviously, some of these numbers probably need to change. Um, I don't remember the last time the census was done, but we'd have to look that up, I'm sure we could, that's online, right? Yeah, I think it's on the town website.
I think it's on the town website.
So really, all the verbiage, I think, is the same, we just need to change the numbers on the population. Any comments, issues on page nine? Alright, page ten. Um, I think the town. Um, ninety ninety one percent developed as mixed residential. That's obviously changed, commercials changed too.
We probably guess that from. Like the accessory somebody.
Um, finance, um, this budget was just, I I it was just adopted, correct? The new budget?
Yes, it was adopted on Tuesday night.
Yeah, so we would have to.
Get those stashments on town manager's office probably.
Or Janet, the finance director.
So, any comments on that?
The finance budget. Page ten.
Um, page eleven. Uh, heart safe community, uh obviously, we're continuing with that, am I correct, Scott?
The county manager.
Okay. Is NEM still providing training?
No.
Alright.
Check in with James about that?
Yep, I'll have to talk to, I'll have to reach in to James about the heart safe community. Um, proper use of nine one one. I think would, would probably have to change, it probably should be the shutdown of heart safety.
We'll have to check in with the fire, does the fire department still do um fire prevention week, nine one one use training and stuff like that?
Yep, still the same, uh E M uh October, yeah, and then the E M S week is still in May. Uh, file life is, Scott, do you know anything, are you guys still doing a file life at the senior center?
Not really, we have it available, but most people don't use it.
But it is something available.
Yeah. Alright, any other concerns or any on page eleven? Alright, page twelve. Um. The streets, I think they're.
Covered by town ordinance.
Yep.
Yeah. Uh, public safety, uh or public safety answering point, P S A. Um, that's the same. Um, the medical first responder, that is also still the same. Uh, check if, no, you guys are still doing, obviously, in our can.
Yep.
Alright, any other concerns on page uh twelve?
We probably double check, but is is the public act ratified into a statute yet, or? We just might have to check that, that public act and make sure that it's not a falls under actual statute now, yeah.
Alright, uh, page thirteen. Uh, first section, B L S, ambulance service, P S A, equipped with A D. Uh, currently assigned to two agencies. Uh, the, any wording on that, anybody feel need to change or anything there?
That's still the current setup.
Okay. Uh, paramedic service with the P S A, uh that's still the same setup.
Correct.
Uh, ongoing E M S system evaluation, review of response times, coverage issue, system effective and uh problem resolution. Uh, yes, we still have the E M S committee that oversees the activity and reports to town manager and town council. That's still good. Um, there written mutual aid agreements. Uh, with C med. They're still doing call list guy, or?
Town hasn't had a call list in years. I mean, we have, I have written mutual aid, written mutual aid agreements, so we could like provide a list of those.
That, that goes back to the questions we asked over a year ago regarding any S O Ps or anything from police dispatch as to M C I and multiple patients uh dispatching S O Ps and we received nothing. Do we have a list of any mutual aid agreements for NEMs?
It should be what we have in there.
Okay, no changes?
Alright. Uh, anything else on that? Page fourteen. Um, comprehensive written mass casualty plan for your community. Yes, the plan has been updated twice since the last plan review. Please see M C I section for copy, so I assume it's gonna be at the end then. Is there any changes or any M C I changes? Um, alright, mass casualty drills to include police, fire, E M S, local government, local health departments, hospitals, mutual aid services and other required. Um. I believe that paragraph's okay the way it is, unless anybody has any objections. Um, move it down to the cert, yeah, town still has the cert team. Um, they're pretty active within the emergency management. Any changes, any good? Alright, page fifteen. Um, nine one one to hospital, I read through this portion and I don't see um anything in my eyes that needs to change. Uh, unless somebody else has any objections or any comments on it.
Only thing we could um update in there is mention of the CAD to CAD link. Or meant, where it goes over the E M D procedures and then while occurring Newington P S A dispatchers or, you know, doing their level, we can make reference to the fact that there's a CAD to CAD link for information sharing between A M R dispatch, their E M D and and the Newington.
Yeah, I think that would fall underneath the uh second paragraph, uh where it says provide pre arrival instructions to the caller as indicated. Um, and then maybe another sentence indicating the CAD to CAD.
Yeah, for back channel information back to the Newington P S A.
Yeah. Um, the next paragraph is good. Um, following paragraph. I don't see any changes unless anybody has anything to bring up. Alright, over on sixteen. Um. Again, I read this as part of that, I didn't see anything um that stuck, stuck out to me, it's kinda the same thing. Um, hospitals, uh we still using Hartford, Saint Francis, Yukon. And obviously, um, Hospital Central Connecticut and C C M C, is there any other hospitals that we're going to? Bill, Bill, Secretary, I don't know.
Just sort of way.
Alright.
We stopped.
Um, trauma center is there, stroke center, cardiac center is there. Any questions, uh, page seventeen? Uh, again, I don't see any thing that stands out that needs to be changed. Alright, we'll move on to eighteen. Um.
I'll check our um. I'll check our current uh staffing level. For um, I jumped, I tried, I was jumping ahead. I don't have page numbers on the, on the electronic version, so. No.
Yeah. So, I mean, it has four thousand plus medical calls a year, Scott, last meeting, you said you're up to almost five now?
Last year they did five thousand forty.
Okay.
Direct to.
Definitely, we did that for five hours.
Yeah, absolutely, so we could change to four thousand medical.
They keep, they keep on the current pace, they'll reach sixteen, uh, six thousand if you.
Sixteen, I was like, that's a big time.
Alright, so we'll change uh change that to six, uh, five thousand plus medical calls. Anybody else, anything else on that page? Page nineteen. Uh, Matt, you're gonna check.
Yeah, I'll check current, the, the exact staffing level as we sit now.
Alright. And then A M R, you still have, Tom and Haven, correct, for your communications?
Uh, yeah, and uh, um, you know, the, under the performance measures, I mean, that's all standard, so we just receive their recreditation and they're uh constantly sampling calls at E M D, which may include new calls and um that Q A process is ongoing. And uh, we still request for a specific quality review, so that's.
Right. Uh, anything else on page nineteen? Alright.
I mean, I think objective, right, one of your objectives.
Yeah, the closed loop is already established now.
Yeah.
That, that would be the CAD to CAD link.
Okay. So do you wanna leave that in there or remove it?
Well, it's a, it's no longer an objective, it was established.
Which one?
The closed loop, number, the first one, account, first, still a closed loop feedback. Or you, we could, we could change it to continue to maintain.
Yeah, cause there's always updates and technology's changing, who knows with radios and I would say, uh, yeah, continue. Anything else?
Should, anything, put in there. That part of the, the town still doesn't have CAD to CAD with the other service.
Alright.
That should be put in as an objective.
Okay.
CAD to CAD with the other service, or are you talking about the M D Ts and the ambulances?
Well, the data transfer that's been promised to us for three contracts for this town that still has not been completed.
And the town agreed that they would pay for the hardware last year under manager Chapman and has yet to happen.
Well, the, M D, the supposedly, the M, the iPads.
We don't have it in E C when there's an objective.
Yep.
Simple, because they could take another five years of excuses down the halls here.
Alright, so we can add that in as an objective, um, to provide, um.
Provide made it mo- mobile data terminal access to our transport am, or the transport angle.
Yeah. Diane, you good at that?
Nope.
Um, so to provide mo- mobile data terminal access to the NEM's ambulances.
Mobile data.
And to streamline data sharing between the P S A and the respond, and the uh responding agencies.
Cause we still get a pile of papers that are printed out in P E F format.
Provide mobile data transfer.
Mobile data terminal, terminals.
M D Ts.
Terminal.
You can put in there like Rocky Hill does. Cause they've got their system up and operational, it's been operational for five years, all of, all the hardware and everything's down there to do it. If that town can do it with the same programs, this town should be able to.
Let me tell you something, what happened?
I lost the stream.
Yeah, so, um.
Provide mobile data terminals.
Mobile data terminals, uh, to, to uh NEM's ambulances. The CAD to field.
Mm-hmm.
Information sharing.
To NEM's, to NEM's ambulances for what?
Uh, for CAD to field information sharing.
It should be to just ambulances, because they're reporting when it's done, but it's just ambulances.
Oh, uh, is the, the town, is the, is the intention for the town to put down mobile data terminals in the A M R ambulances?
I'm not saying we need M D D terminals, we need the data transfer, how it gets accomplished is what's important, not M D D terminals, that's not gonna accomplish what we need done.
I mean, from a visibility spec uh perspective for the ambulances, it gives you a double check on addresses and um you know, we are going to the proper versus fifth versus fifth, you know, fifth versus fifth street. Cause if it's right there in letters in the ambulance, you're not gonna have that problem, which happened last year. Causing a delay in the response for a critical call.
Did you get it?
I got this edited.
Alright, any other objectives that everybody feels need to be added in?
Do you want to streamline information sharing between the P S A and the, and I'm not talking about CAD to field.
For the last three contracts.
I'm not, I'm looking to have a, a, a cool conversation.
I am.
So what I'm, what I'm asking is, how would you like to word, not, not the CAD to field, but your issue with the data dump from dispatch to you guys regarding response times and whatnot?
Provide the dispatch Roth data, make sure it says Roth data, not uh for the P E F.
Anything else? Alright, page twenty, that is the one paragraph, I don't think that changes anything. Um. Five year objectives, um, I don't know what the plans for the P S A's that are here in town. They're planning on just leaving everything the way it is, well, that's something that we can look into again following up with chief.
Any insight into possible five year objectives?
Alright. Um, first responder are one.
Still Newington P D.
What's that?
Still Newington P D.
Yep, again, um, approximately thirty two hundred and fifty four calls.
That will hopefully be updated.
That means you go to five thousand plus. Um.
And we'll double check the approximate response time.
That's right, county clerk. Certifications, they're still E M R higher. Uh, and then they're still carrying first aid bag, oxygen, and eighties.
Yeah, you could probably update that since the, the um adoption of a minimum equipment list for first responders for the state, you could just say that they are in compliance with the O E M S's minimum equipment list for first responder vehicles.
Yeah, there's dark can.
So where it says vehicles equipped with blah, 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 we could work into there that um they are compliant with the O E M S minimum equipment list for first responder vehicles.
Yeah.
As they.
The plant was O M E S.
O E M L.
I said O, O E. M S for first responders.
Minimum equipment list.
Yep.
For first responder vehicles.
Alright, part of that is on page twenty two. Um, again, which is all in our can, same paragraph. Other than every patrol vehicle stocks the D P H, requires first responder medical supplies and offers complete documentation. Uh, medical control still hard for.
Yep.
Alright, and then we'll have to check in as far as how many sworn officers.
Yeah, we'll update that, we're down.
And then uh, performance measures. Yeah, and that's something we'll have to follow up.
Update the average response time.
Um, ongoing E M S system evaluation. Um, that doesn't need to change, uh, is Dave Bailey still, anybody know?
Yeah, Dave Bailey's still the E M S coordinator at Harvard Austin.
Okay.
Dr. John Joe's medical director.
Alright. So, uh, page twenty three. Um, anybody see anything on that that should change? Uh, the, to be your objectives, I, I mean, I don't know, I know they talked about it a while ago, um, or maybe it was, I think, Clem, you were still on the department, did the fire department have a supplemental at one point?
Then, then they've never, Newington Fire Department's never had a supplemental first responder.
Okay.
You can talk to Chief Megan more, but that's why the oxygen and the first aid kits are gone. Cause for years, they were. Just, yeah.
Yep, so we don't, so there's still no supplemental first responder at this point, so that's.
And if they wanted to do that, that's been easy, I, literally, the form is easier, cause basically you list your vehicles and the equipment that they have, you could reference Berlin Fire Department, who are a supplemental first responder for their town.
Yep. Alright.
It's only a matter of time before Newington Fire starts becoming or probably even paid and more active and whatnot, and then if it's staffed and paid twenty four seven, you might see supplemental first response.
Alright, any other concerns on that page? Uh, alright, um, local E M S plan, uh, performance measures. Um. I don't know, do we need, um. Just leave, as far as I think, leave it alone unless there's any concerns on on twenty four or twenty five. On twenty-four or twenty-five. Alright. Everybody good? We're halfway through. Everybody good, anybody need a break?
Yep.
That's good.
Well, yeah, I was.
Alright.
Finding something.
Uh, twenty-six, um. That is, again, uh. The AMR question needs to change, right, we need to take that out.
Yeah.
Um. Other than that, I believe everything on that page twenty-six is still the same. Uh, twenty-seven. Them's still operating three ve- three ambulances and one support vehicle and one staff car.
Or one, but there's no support vehicle.
Okay, so we should take out the support vehicle? Um, and that, they still have a.
Define what is support vehicle.
Yeah.
We have one staff car.
What's that?
Staff car.
Leave that in there, which is taken out the square.
We should probably reword. Reword it where it says two ambulances for nine-one coverage and a third for standbys, just to, we'll operate four ambulances for coverage.
We have licensed four, so it was four.
Yeah, so we'll co- they operate four ambulances to make, to cover nine-one-one calls and um.
Standby.
And special events in town. Why why divvy it up two and one?
Yeah.
It was not forty.
So, no, so where it says, um. Wait, you're on the, you're on the wrong thing, we're on overview. What page is overview?
One twenty-five.
Twenty.
Three sources.
Twenty-seven, operate four, okay, yeah, I'm, I formatted. Operates four ambulances, um.
Yeah, it should be four ambulances and one staff vehicle.
Yeah, okay. There you go.
Um, and then AMR's obviously still based out of West Hartford.
Yep.
And it's, uh, normally it's still an E T in a paramedic.
Uh, yes.
Are they still using system status now?
Yep.
Okay. Cuz it's actually, the wording's wrong, system status deployment models.
Where are you, oh, there.
Based out of West Hartford office utilizing system status deployment models.
Um, do we need to put anything in there as far as, cuz um fly car on nights and weekends are just leave them at the ambulance?
No, cuz that would come on your.
Okay. Alright, performance measures. Um. I believe that's all.
You have to.
Good.
Refer back to the contract.
Yep.
Cuz in there, there's mentioning a hundred dollar fine. And I believe in the contract extension, we're considering removing that.
Yes, that'll have to be updated between the, between, to the updated contract language, it should just, it should just mirror the contract language.
Just specify in contract or something like that.
Alright, and there's also on that page. Alright, twenty-eight. Them's, you're still using Harvard Hospital as well? For medical control?
Correct.
Uh, AMR, you're still using, uh, St. Francis, correct?
Uh, yeah. Um, so John can leave and that thing needs to be updated, so he's hiring in a couple weeks, and the gentleman's name's Patrick Goff here, but I'll add that to the uh. Email when I send it over.
Okay. Uh. Objectives, anybody have any comments on the objectives?
I was just reading, reading through. Common ambulance, common ambulance stock to B L S level maintains similar level of service. I don't know what that's coming out of, but um clearly identify backup service providers to fulfill requirements of the B L S P S R. For AMR and EMS, that still needs to be obtained, so that should be staying there. Under the three-year. Um, we've, we've now removed the fines from AMR, so that first three-year objective probably has to, has to go.
Yep. So we just take that out? Uh. Patient outcome-based response system. That's probably still an objective, right? Alright, anything else on page twenty-nine? Alright, go over to page thirty. Um, basic life support, uh, performance measures. I don't believe there's been any changes to those standards, unless I'm wrong.
That refers to a statute. So as long as that statute hasn't changed.
Yeah. Uh, thirty-one is the same thing.
I mean, I would just mention that the contractual, so like this response time, activation time, response, response. In the contract, we we report, uh, response time, we don't break it down based on activation time. Some other things that are here, um, so I don't know if we wanna mirror the contract for response time reporting, um, but we. I don't know where this.
We'll have to, we'll have to read that statute and read the contracts, all the the numbers, that came from StatWiz.
Yeah, so right, right now, we're on the B L S part of it, so the next one I think is where.
For for both of those, what we'll need to do is we will need to read that statute it's referring to and read the contracts, and it has to, has to mirror the the combination of those two.
Yeah, I agree. So. Okay, on that. The next one is the paramedic level service. Uh, again, you know, the AMR, um, name will have to change, it'll be the same one, whether you can change the other one. Um, and I believe everything is still the same.
Where are we, you on thirty-one?
I'm on thirty-three.
Paramedic level service.
Hold on.
R five.
Hold on.
You're in to a endum.
No.
Or those put in the middle.
In the middle.
Uh.
Right?
So we need to update the operations manager.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, I think everything else is still the same. Thirty-four.
Um, perform, we. Performance measure should um mirror the contract.
That refers to AMR contract for EMS exhibit two for details, so we would just.
So we just have to make sure it exhibits the current contract.
Right, so we're gonna get a new contract.
Yeah, compare it to the current contract.
Yeah. Um. Anything else, I don't see anything else, any objectives that we may need to add or leave? Alright, um, page thirty-five, the EMS committee.
The numbers are wrong, according to the town uh E code charter, it's seven members, not five.
Okay, yeah, so that'll have to change.
And that whole, that whole breakdown has to.
Change.
Because it's, it it, the update to the charter for the committee got rid of representation from services.
Right.
Cuz it mentions appointment from each service and then a December. So it's now, there's, there's no affiliation.
And that whole sections.
So yeah, we'll have to ju- just read the charter and update that whole paragraph.
That's not the charter.
No, it's the, um, or or the, well, not the town charter, but the.
Yeah, the.
The committee's charter.
The committee's charter, used, used to.
Town law.
Yeah, town law.
I think that's in one paragraph.
Yeah, if you.
So just take that copy.
You can go to E code, type in Newington Emergency Medical Services Committee, it'll give you the whole, um. Language.
Alright, anything else on thirty-five? Alright, thirty-six. Uh, which is part of that still, I don't see anything. One-year objective, increase actual number, member sitting on a committee, that would still fall under that same thing. I don't know why, why, why you wanna.
It went from five to seven, so I think that was part of, part of that, so that can probably be.
It's weird because that was done before two thousand eighteen.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Alright. Uh, the next section on page thirty-seven. Community training programs, them's are still doing community training.
Yeah.
And Laura stole the contact.
I don't, why would we wanna contact in there?
I would just put the NEM's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we could just take Laura Permuji Assistant Chief out and just move that one line, and it would just be going to the MSPO box.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly.
Alright, so yeah, let's remove that that name. You didn't change your phone number, right?
Hmm. That should be five eight two four.
Five eight two five.
Uh, that gets you into the office, so.
So five eight two four is better?
Well, but the problem is, it used to be that the office, only one number. Used to go out to the rest of the building, but someone opened that up. So if they call five eight two four. They'll like get the crews and stuff after six o'clock, and that should go to the office.
So should we list five eight two five?
I'd rather have five eight two five.
Okay, that's what, that's what listed now.
That's what we have, so.
Yeah, that's what's listed now.
Um.
Then it goes into the phone system versus.
Right.
House phones.
Yeah, makes sense. And then S- Scott, uh, still doing heart saver, CPR, babysitting certifications.
I think they've changed the names, that's the only thing.
Um, with 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 interlandi being out, who would be a good point of reference to up, to update this information with all the proper verbiage?
I mean, I don't, I would just say A H A and there's the Heart, there's the Heart Association, there's the Red Cross, community CPR programs.
The ordinance number for the EMS committee.
Okay.
I don't see why we have to actually put the names of the programs in there if we're doing community CPR.
To make the document look longer and more complex.
Scott's wrong, yeah.
Um, so we'll up the. Um, heart safe community training, NEM's provides community. Um. Community-based programs provided through American Heart Association, American Red Cross, something to that.
And National Safety Council. Yeah, that's.
That's, that's one of the problems with the names, cuz we, we use three or four different. Safety programs now.
We'll, we'll clean, clean that up a little bit too.
Yeah. And then, uh, is NEM's also providing, uh, still doing CPR training, town hall and seniors that are?
We have, um, town hall staff, I don't think we've done in a while, but I think we can leave.
But is, it's still an option.
Yeah, we just leave it in there.
Yeah.
And, uh, the extravaganza, library program and other community events.
This, uh. Yeah. I'm just, I'm still trying to keep up reading, so. Can you keep going?
Alright, move on to page thirty-eight. Um.
God, what's this, um, Emergency Care and Safety Institute? And the Health and Safety Institute, is that still act stuff that we teach under?
I don't think so.
NEM's recently became a training center for the Emergency Care and Safety Institute and Health Safety Institute, these will allow them to provide dozens of programs to the community.
I'd take that out.
Take that out?
Alright.
Is that the babysitting stuff?
That was one of them, yeah.
Um, looking at the objectives. I don't see any, unless you guys know any different, remove or take anything out.
Is it still an objective to gather information and work with Board of Education on public CPR and A D training?
That sounds.
Okay.
Expand training programs to offer pet CPR and first aid.
That's already being done, right?
They're already doing all that.
Right.
So we, we can take that one out?
Yeah, that'll.
But keeping one but taking out two.
Taking out two. If you wanted to give them a new objective, you could, um, cuz there's eventually funding for it is to increase community stability training programs.
We're already doing that.
But that wasn't around when they go.
We said increase. That's up to.
Hmm.
To you on the, on the NEM side, is there any other one-year objective you'd wanna put in? Or you wanna leave it just with the, um. Public CPR and A D training?
Yeah, it's about it.
Alright, we'll move on to page thirty-nine. Uh, just all, all I was day-to-day.
Were you good with the three-year objectives?
Okay.
Day-to-day operations, um. Nothing has changed here. Is there anything on that? Alright. Page forty.
Sit the backup mutually.
Yep.
Yeah, so yeah, I'll provide our mutually agreements.
And we have written ones we can provide for NEMs.
Yeah, we'll incorporate all that right into the.
Well, before we, before they incorporate it, you should check to see the validity of those.
I know, cuz does it actually require copies of them, or is it on this, cuz when you do your cert state. Uh, when you put your licenses and stuff into the state, it just says a list, it doesn't. I mean, I would just provide a list to do that. Because the problem is, that's when the, the language in those is very. It's.
It's a better lesson that they'll.
Yeah, bas- based off.
It's no state format.
Yes, based off the current, um, the current language here, is as a submission of this plan, there are no specific backup mutual aid agreements. Outside the existing contract.
I don't guess there was.
So what we can write is that there are written mutually aid agreements.
Yeah, that's what the state has.
That, well, NEMs and AMR maintain written mutually aid agreements with surrounding services to supplement.
I mean, we can give them listings if they wanna go that far, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, even the state wording doesn't require you to, which is, they don't require you, it just says, do you have, yes, listen.
Yeah, if they wanna, we could provide it later.
So that whole backup mutually, um. It's gonna, that's a paragraph that's basically gonna get accidentally rewritten to basically say that. Um, the services maintain a list of written mutually, both AMR and NEM's, making a list of mutual, written mutually agreements.
Correct.
To supplement their.
With states for responding to the town or something for that, I'm sorry.
We have busy, we will provide mutually as needed.
When capable. Cause I think this says win table. It jumps around, if you start talking, I'll go to you. See, just changed.
Alright, so page forty one, special response. Um we have Newington Police, Newington EMS, AMR, Newington Fire Department. I think we should add Newington cert team into that.
Well, what exactly are you gonna do during the special response?
They are part of the call up, I mean, if there's a.
Right, but what what. Yeah, but what exactly are they gonna do?
They could help move things, provide logistics. I mean, I I was up to anybody else, but I mean, there are.
If you're gonna put them in there, then you should actually give them a defined role. Because if a lot, having worked with many cert teams in many different states, if they don't have a defined role when it comes to an M C I. You you can bring a chaos factor.
Okay, I I was just enough, okay, you know, you don't have to add them in. Uh mass gathering events.
Are we putting in cert or no?
No, just leave it out, we'll leave it out, unless the the state comes back and asks for it, then.
Yeah, cause it this isn't just, like, the mass gathering events could be simply the the planning of a extravaganza.
And they they do have. Yeah, an M C I is different, but a mass cat like.
But I don't know how the state thinks, if you put someone in there, it probably wanted to find a role.
Wasn't cert active when there was supposed to be that? That freaky, when we had the freaky storm in October.
Yeah, they were at the shelter.
They they do have defined roles, I don't have their, I don't. Yeah, I don't personally know exactly all of their roles, um or their S O Ps or anything like that, but.
They are active and and. So they're part of the town.
Cause when we had that storm in October, whenever whoever was out of power for almost a week, they were running the. The um shelter.
Uh so. Do you wanna add them in or leave them out?
They are a resource that that are used in some of those.
Alright, so let's add um Newington cert team to the resources, please.
Or do you just say as defined in Newington's emergency management plans? And then you include that as an appendix, and then you don't spell it out, so that when there's changes, it doesn't affect that document.
Yeah, we could, we could put um.
So you refer to the appendix, so that as changes are done. Gotta remember, this was witnessed, but Scott Woods proved everybody he was the master of everything.
How about if we just put news?
It's got too much information in it.
We could just put, uh how about we sort of putting cert, we put Newington Emergency Management Response, because that's what they follow under. And then it'll sound a little bit better.
Yeah, then everybody knows what.
Because we know.
E M responses and then that's their responsibility.
Um emergency, or is it emergency?
Is it Emergency Management Office?
Well, see, they're looking for a plan, I think, in this case.
Just reference E M. Right now, we're listing, we're under the resources section, so we're literally just listing.
Yeah, the Emergency Management is a resource.
Whatever that falls under, I think T J is the current.
So just emergency.
Um mass gatherings, police department, fire marshal review and approve, uh. Fire marshal's still very active in that. Attaches information related to regulations supporting EMS involvement and assistance to make process. Uh M C I's. Anybody seen? Any changes to a little paragraph before I move on?
We know re- revision year of the most recent M C I plan. We're after attach it anyway. This one, this one less than two thousand sixteen plan.
It hasn't been touched.
Hasn't been touched since when?
That may be confirmed to. M C I's are gonna follow the way.
Alright, go on to page forty two. Special population, a special needs population. Ambulance's ability to provide special needs. First, we have uh community has nursing home, assisted living group homes, Hartford Regional Center.
AMR still maintain a bariatric ambulance?
Newington still has four, you still have center mounts?
Uh the printer doesn't, right? Or does it? I'm trying to remember now.
That really is so.
Oh, so it's uh, so it's Newington EMS uh uh has four ambulances with center mount stretchers.
I think what they were, what they were trying to word with this is they have the pa- is that they have powered cots with the bleph system. Which is standard operating now and not not special needs. So that whole, that whole thing could probably get blown out.
So take out that whole section?
The Newington EMS's form alone section should be blown out.
Yeah, take out section two.
Uh the fire department one is still the same. Then both providers carry supplies to be able to safely transport them at special needs. I mean. Uh one year objectives. Uh I don't see. Anything that needs to change, unless anybody else does add anything.
This is the memo at references.
Port local provider and working with police department and fire marshal office to include EMS and planning mass gathering events, has that been implemented at all or?
Yeah, so there we follow, that's the one thing, even before DJ, they didn't follow.
When was the last time you tested the system?
Actually, Keith Chapman did a whole.
Outside of the tabletop.
We did the governor's exercise last year.
There was several years ago, we did the.
Yeah.
We did the actual one up at Cedar Crest. I don't remember what year that was.
I mean, Newington EMS participated in Berlins this past summer.
Specifically, when was the last time Newington tested their plan outside of a tabletop? We'd probably go back to that Cedar Cedar Crest exercise.
Yeah, but what's interesting is when you go back into in the emergency management meetings. Anytime there's an event, you can declare that as an exercise. So every time the emergency management center here in town was activated, that's technically that. Yeah, and that's what they list, I mean. So we had standbys for the herd cave, we had standbys for the possibly severe blizzards. Like I kind of, so it's, you're exercising it, but there wasn't really a drill.
Ho- a part of it was.
I think that we should talk to DJ about, to get the verbiage, because all that has changed drastically.
I'll reach out to DJ, cause I talked to him about some other things. I'll reach out and talk to him. Alright, and then anything else before we move on? Alright, page four, page forty four.
Yes, this is St. Fran's policy, I mean, I don't know if we can just reach out and make sure that has changed, but.
Yeah, and then after that is Hartford's policy, so we should probably just reach out to both EMS coordinators and just get a an updated version of their Q A policies.
Yep, I agree, where's Hartford, there it is. So really, yeah, I mean. We could um reach out to both.
And we just, we just need to get. Of their most current Q A policies for.
Alright, so Hartford Hospital. After the Hartford Hospital, page fifty one. Clinical measures and patient outcomes. Newton EMS committee felt is important to provide direction to the future committee members to strive by. To achieve by implementing the file clinical measurements and patient outcomes below. And it lists going into.
So these are, these are specifically addressed within. Um within the Q A system for hospitals, I I could tell you doing Hartford Hospital one, all those those metrics are covered within. The data I need to provide at Hartford Hospital under quality assurance program.
But now states have put another program on top of it, Connie.
What is it?
Where Mike Zachary is not working.
So it seems redundant that we have this on top of the. The what we just listed for both both hospitals, hospitals quality assurance program.
That brings us up to the end of the document. So that is the document.
Um, well, that's the, so that's a question now, this clinical measures and patient outcomes section. Do we leave it in, or do we, cause it's redundant to the quality assurance programs that are implemented by statute by both hospitals.
And most of this is standard.
Yeah.
Procedure of what everybody's doing.
Standard of care, yeah.
The the STEMI, I mean, I'm looking at the paramedic, the STEMI, you know, it's.
We could, we could leave it in as is.
Yeah, it's it's almost redundant.
There's a lot of, even the time for strokes and stuff like that. They reverted back, now it's like within twenty four hours versus. Cause they found new drugs that actually.
Um as being. As being redundant to the the um. Quality assurance programs are reenacted by the sponsor hospitals, should we just remove this section?
Yeah.
Agreed?
She went all of this out.
This whole, yeah, this whole clinical measures, patient outcomes. That's actively being tracked by by the hospital.
Here's your attention.
And then the attachments themselves will have to be updated for the most recent versions of all of them.
So what I'll do is I will get, um Diane, I will email you. The copy, so you can have it on on a Word file. A couple things you can follow up on. Um and then AMR, you're gonna send send us your stuff. Um so hopefully, um we can get it uh typed up and revised. And then um our next meeting is um May eighteenth. So if everything is good.
Jim should be having a staff person typing it, I'll give him all my notes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, and I could.
Send me the email, cause if he doesn't have it in a Word document, I'll give you that and then they can edit for my changes.
I just emailed you the Word document.
Um yeah, so if we can get get this typed up and then um get it distributed, um maybe uh before the meeting.
Before they everybody review in case there's typos or whatever to.
And then if if we can adopt it um at our May eighteenth meeting. Uh then we can get it submitted and it's only uh five months late.
And then council can get it over.
If we have to go to, you know.
It's gotta go to council for review.
It does.
Even like they said though, even if you're in a draft format, send it to them, because what they're gonna do is start. Instead of trying to, cause this is gonna probably go back and forth between, you know, state.
Yeah, so we just submit this.
But as as Diana brought up, because we really can't submit anything to the state without approval from the council on it, because it's the council that's actually sending it for.
So then we would have to pro- comment that we adopt where we say it's okay.
Once we agree with all the changes, then we give it to the town council, and they have to go through it and give it. The approval to submit it to the state.
Okay, so we're still at a good ti- time period of, you know, even if we don't submit it until our June or July meeting, we said July was our goal, so.
Yeah, and uh James is off until next week, so I will talk to him next week about.
Anybody else have any comments, concerns with the town EMS plan?
If in more detailed readings you come up with anything, just shoot out an email and we'll we'll address it.
Alright. Public, public participation.
I do not see any other participants online.
Alright. Committee members' comments, concerns? Alright, thank you everyone, and uh we'll get that working and uh. I will have the minutes out earlier, I'm a little tied up.